Good evening, let's start our September 18th City Council meeting. And we always start with citizen comments on agenda items. I don't believe we have anybody signed up. And I just checked with Patrick and there's no staff reports. So we're gonna move right in to item two and see what the Chief has brought us.
Just to update council on the 2017 Justice Assistance Grant. We are one of the jurisdictions in Colorado that receive an annual grant from the Bureau of Justice Administration. It's called the Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant. The memo outlines the six key areas that this grant can be used for. This year, we received a grant in the amount of $10,178. We have traditionally used the grant for law enforcement programs and primarily either community policing, overtime for community policing efforts in the city, or equipment. The grant has a couple of requirements. It requires us to notify you, our elected officials, of what we intend to spend the money. Money on, and it also has a requirement to advise the community of what we want to, or what we've identified as our need, and to listen to any community input. This year, we've identified the need for a stationary auto license plate reader. This could be mounted on a pole or a trailer. If you're not familiar with ALPRs, we currently have one that is a mobile unit in our car. And this allows, this would allow us, in this particular case with a stationary ALPR, to put it into, to mount it in high crime areas. So it'll do a couple of things. It'll keep track of license plates coming in and out of the area. It'll identify those vehicles that are stolen. It'll identify drivers or registered owners, I'm sorry, I should say registered owners of vehicles who may be wanted. And it sends information out when it gets hits to vehicles in the particular area. The area that we've identified that we'd like to put this ALPR is in our I-70 Kipling corridor to help us monitor that particular area. You know, from previous presentations that I've done, that the I-70 Kipling corridor with the number of lower-tier hotels and motels that we have tend to be our high-crime area, our high-call-for-service area. So this grant, in the amount of $10,178, would cover part of the $16,000 cost for an ALPR. And we've got the, we've got a proposal to purchase a trailer as well. We would cover the remaining amount on this and any additional purchases that we'd need for this particular automatic license plate reader with our seizure fund dollars that we have in Fund 63. Fund 63. So, be happy to answer any questions, take any input from council.
Are there any questions? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I understand that the records gathered in this program are to be kept for a certain amount of time. Is that, do you know what, how long you can keep that?
Right. House Bill 141152 states that these records, general videotape records, are kept for six months. If there's need to identify, those records can be kept up to the third anniversary of the records collection. And then if they're not used for criminal prosecution perspectives, they need to be destroyed. We currently adhere to that with the ALPR that we have in our mobile unit.
And then, would these records be in any way subject to open records requests, or otherwise be subject to view by the public, or would they be only viewable by law enforcement personnel?
No, well, again, certainly by law enforcement personnel, and citizens can make requests for those records. You know, make a request through the Colorado Open Records Act for any official record. We would have to view that and look at that and make sure that it meets the statutory requirements of the Criminal Justice Open Records Act.
Okay. And then, I guess my concern is that somehow all those records would then become available to the public, but from what you're saying, that generally wouldn't be the case, that they'd only be available for specific law enforcement cases, or would they generally be available for?
Well, any record is available, or not confidential records.
Okay.
So any record that we have is available for a citizen to make a request. We have to make sure that it fits within the framework of the request, that there's not a procure, procure, procurnicary aspect to that where they'd make money off of that, that particular request, and it wouldn't jeopardize a current investigation.
Okay. And then, similar to where you have speed traps and you have to notify people in that area that this is going on, is there any sort of notice to the public that this is going on, or is it just going on?
There'd be no notice.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
So, according to the rules, would a civil case, let's say there's a civil suit, that would fit under the open records, that somebody could sue this for use in a civil suit?
We can be sued for anything.
Yep. Yeah, no, I'm not talking about suing the city, but someone who is suing, let's say, their wife or their husband or something.
Somebody could, people can make requests for records. We evaluate those requests, and, you know, if it fits within the statutes, you know, in terms of releasing it, then we may have to release that. The data that we're gathering is simply, is not a photograph of a person, right? It's a license plate. So it'll say, "On this particular date, August 18th, 2017, at 6:45, this particular license plate drove through this area at this particular time." And then there would be a, that system would run that information against the CCIC database. And would-
But are you saying that this-
This could be, an open records request would meet the requirements if its purpose was to be used in a civil suit? Or would you not even consider that, just-
You know, I have to consider those individually when they're submitted to us, and the city attorney weighs in on that as well. You know, it's, it is a criminal justice record, so it is subject to the Criminal Justice Colorado Open Records Act. And so we're currently using one right now in our mobile unit. We've not had any requests at all for the data contained within that. We've had this operational for four to five years.
Ms. Hoppy has a question.
Thank you, Chief. So you're saying that the information that you have then goes through a database, and so then if someone's looking for said license plate for a hit-and-run or something like that, then that gives you kind of a pinpoint place of where they could start looking for that person, they went through this area at a certain time? And that's how the information's used, right? Like that kind of stuff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Pond? I believe you had your head. I changed your mind. Wait a minute. Okay, let's go with Larry, and then we'll go back to Ms. Pond.
Can you describe, it may be a little hard, but in Cliff Notes fashion, success rate that we've had as far as in eliminating crime, resolving crime with the mobile unit that we have?
Yes. How's that for a Cliff Note? We have had success with our mobile unit, right, in the recovery of vehicles and the arrests of wanted criminal offenders. I can't give you the exact numbers of those, but I can tell you it's been successful. It is a tool that's used by the Colorado Metro Auto Theft Authority, you know, as a way to address motor vehicle thefts and the crimes that are associated with that. So, yes, we've had success.
Thank you.
You bet.
And now, Mr. Pond?
I appreciate the questions and the answers. I just wanted to say that I was supportive of it, I suppose, unless there was outstanding questions, that we're getting to the point of, if a consensus is necessary to provide one, but I didn't want to preempt any other comments about that. Otherwise, I would offer a consensus to-
A consensus?
Yeah, to move forward with this as written up.
Your consensus to use the GAG funds to purchase this device? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah.
Just as a point of clarification, I don't know that it's different with police records, but I can tell you, the open records requests that we satisfy in the clerk's office, there's no question about, ever asked about, "How are you gonna use this information, or why do you want it?" They just specifically ask for the information that they want, and you give it to them. So, what they do with it after that is up to them.
Thanks, Janelle. With Criminal Justice Records Acts, there is a specific question that people have to attest to, that they won't use that information for financial gain. So that is the one difference between public records and criminal justice records.
Well, now, if we could get that on our side, all these data miners, they want data for, so they can make money off of it, that would be good.
Okay, let's move on to item number three. Factory security report. Mr. Goff?
Yeah, thank you. We have staff and guests here, so you wanna come on up? They're all shy. Somebody wanna come to the table? Joyce, Julie? Nobody coming? So we, the presentation's up here, but we can, if you'd rather sit, if that's more comfortable for you, or you can do it from up there, too? So, tonight, we have our consultants with us, who are gonna give a brief summary of the report that they put together for us, that we've asked them to put together. They've done a security and risk assessment of several different municipal buildings in the city, City Hall, of course, the Whittiers Rec Center, and the Active Adult Center. I think we've briefed council on this a little bit in the past, when we had the police department come and provide you that Run, Hide, Fight video and self-awareness training that we all need to be aware of for critical, for shooting incidents and other incidents that we all may come in contact with in our daily lives, unfortunately. So, we've expanded beyond that and did a complete security and risk assessment of our buildings. And I put in the staff memo that the actual report is considered confidential because of the nature of what's in the report, and we don't want to make that public for everybody to determine what our vulnerabilities are in our different buildings, so we did not include that in your packet. And that will not be discussed in great detail this evening, but there will be a summary provided on what some of the recommendations look like and what our current situation is as it relates to our security in our different municipal buildings. So, Joyce, Julie, did you have anything you wanna say, or just turn it over to our consultants? Introduce yourselves, please, and-
Thank you. My name's Steve Thibodeau, I'm with iParametrics. My partner, Ken Murphy. Ken has been a great help to us here. Ken is actually one of our local assets here in the Denver metropolitan area. iParametrics is located out of Alpharetta, Georgia. We do have members all across the country. I'm actually stationed out of Florida. So we do do this for multiple organizations and agencies. What I've done is I've prepared a brief slide presentation for staff. First, we start with our asset characterization. Asset characterization is understanding your operations. We interviewed 75-plus staff members and employees during a week timeframe here at the municipal building, at the Recreation Center, and the Active Adults Center. These are the offices and the directories that we interviewed, staff members from. We did interview courts next door as well. First thing we're gonna talk about is facility security levels. This is how we classified your facilities. We classify your facilities based on the population, the size, the threat to your tenants, the mission criticality, and symbolism, either a low, a medium, or a high for a scale. We use the formula of threat times vulnerability times consequences, which is the impact that it has on the city, to determine our risk factors for each and every location that we reviewed. Your municipal building, we rated it as a Level 3, which was our highest level rating for security. We base that based on the police department, your municipal courts, your council chambers here, as well as your key city administrative offices that you have. Your Recreation Center was listed as a Level 2, a medium, for security requirements because of administrative offices, and the Children's Pavilion that you have there, the Childcare Center, that's located within that building. And your Active Adults Center was also a Level 2. Again, this is all based on the size, the population of personnel that at any one given time are there, and the only thing you have at the Active Adults Center is you have some administrative offices there. We use our design-based threat, and we have a list of 20 undesirable events, ranging from anywhere from assault, vehicle ramming, improvised explosive devices. These are things that we look at and evaluated to determine the risk factors for your facilities. Our analysis, strengths, management recognized the need for improvement of security on all Staff at all levels, view security as a requirement and as a priority for your mission's success. And your employees are, have security training opportunities that have been established, the Run, Shoot, Fight. Right now, for areas of improvement, we're looking at this particular facility here. It's an aging facility, and the infrastructure that you have currently inside the facility. Again, when this facility was built, you didn't have quite as many staff members as you have now. Now you have more missions to your public. You don't have a single point of contact for security or facility, security-related incidents. Right now, each division is basically maintaining their own security incident reports, and we'll see later down in the report where we're talking about establishing a single point of contact for you for security. Visitor access control, particularly for this building. Right now, any visitor can come in and walk right into the employee workspace, unrestricted. The need for a centralized online reporting process of security-related incidents. That is where you will gather all of your incidents, whether it is at the Recreation Center, the Adult Center, at one of your other locations in the city. This will give you a centralized database to better track incidents as they're occurring. A citywide mass notification system. Currently, there is not one for the city, and there are capabilities of that to where you can use your phone systems for an instance here, that you can use it as a mass notification. Enhancements of your security systems in your facilities itself. And citywide security policies and procedures. The procedures that you have, your staff has done a very good job for the standards that you currently have. However, for industry standards, they needed to be ramped up some. Are there any questions?
You know, I'd like to start with a question. You referred to the security level in regard to the, these three buildings. You said higher, medium. Does that, what you're meaning there, if I understand, right, that this particular building, such as this one, has high needs or a high security level is needed?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. Based on the type of business that you conduct here in the building, you have a higher need of more security levels.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Council, Mr. Pond?
I just asked to go back to that slide.
That very one?
That very one, just to see, I appreciate that question. I'm sorry, I was, this is a lot, this is a dense amount of information. I appreciate all the work on this. The question I have, and maybe you stated it, so I apologize, is the Recreation Center Level 2. It's, you're showing bulleted administrative offices in the Children's Pavilion where kids are being taken care of. Does that mean, does that then mean that the other areas inside of the Rec Center are not considered a Level 2?
No, the whole facility is considered a Level 2.
Okay, so these are just why, these are just some of the examples of why it raises to that level. Thank you.
Mr.-
Larry.
Larry? I started calling Mr. Matthews.
Engineering-wise, like when we're designing drainage systems, I mean, inlets are considered a low priority, you may design for like a 10-year storm. Dams are high priority, you'd design for a 100-year storm because of all the damage that can be done. Do you have an equivalent type of rating system that way in your enterprise?
It is.
And what are we shooting for, you know, the 100-year storm or the 10-year storm for our city?
These specific ratings are, what we've done is we have developed a minimum level of security for each facility based on a Level 1, 2, or 3. And what that does is that tells, gives you a specific standard for that facility, be it locks, alarm systems, do you need a guard service? Basically, your Level 3 facilities or your highest levels require a higher level of security standards because of the criticality of this facility. A Level 2 facility will not need as much items to maintain security for that facility as well as a Level 1. Your Level 1's your lowest level, unfortunately, based on the size and the populations that you have coming into your facilities. All of your facilities that we evaluated were at least a Level 2, a minimum, a medium level of security.
And actually, also, in addition, all of your facilities, we did a highly detailed list of areas of improvements that needed to be made and their costs associated with them. And so to your point, as far as how do you plan, you know, five-year, 100-year, what are we planning for? That can have some budgetary constraints in it also. And so with that, we've been very detailed in prioritizing what we thought should be your first hits, your second hits, and things like that.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Urban?
So, it appears as though a lot of the security assessments that have been done are both sort of physical in nature and walk-up threats. Has there been any sort of consideration given to virtual threats or threats that may come not from our physical structure, but from infrastructure, or the internet, or other types of considerations that aren't necessarily related to our physical assets?
For this evaluation, IT was not a part of the evaluation.
And then, my next question is, this, it appears somewhat defensive in nature. Is there any type of discussion or assessment on the offensive side as it relates to how do we protect? I mean, we did the Run, Hide, and Fight aspects of this.
Yes, it's included in the formal report. The full report does have those guidelines in it.
Right. And aside from the training that you guys have actually already started, which is great, that needs to be augmented, also, we do recommend, and it's stated there, the policies and procedures, that is also proactive, because it tells people, gives people's plans on how to react, what to do in the event of an incident, so that you limit your exposure.
And then, as it relates to potential threats to municipal buildings as a sort of a class of buildings, is there any sort of proactive steps the city can take to mitigate threats in general, whether it be, I'm not sure what those would be, but how does a municipal building in general mitigate threats before they even happen, or try to?
Right. We've done, I can't even count them all, countless, city municipality buildings and county buildings, things like that. There are absolutely things you can do to mitigate your risk, and in our detailed findings, we have shared specifically what we recommend as Priority 1, Priority 2, along with a cost estimate of what it's gonna be. And sometimes, we even included designs in our work for this project. We included some designs to help mitigate your risk. But absolutely, there are things that you can do to protect not only the employees here, but also the citizens that come into your building.
I was thinking a little bit more, maybe prior to that, or having staff trained in ways to identify potential conflicts before they arise, or identify ways to mitigate those types of conflicts so that they don't arise to a threat level, so that there isn't that sort of boiling-over point, or, I mean, is there any sort of training or otherwise methods we can employ in that realm?
Absolutely. We, and I'm local, so when I say "we," I mean iParametrics. We do an advanced Run, Hide, Fight presentation, where Run, Hide, Fight is included in there, but we also include signs, they're called, oh God, it's an acronym, starts with a P, I don't remember it, but anyway, it's talking about, they're pre-attack indicators. So we tell you what to look for psychologically and behavior of someone, so everyone in this room, we would tell you what to be looking for, and not one of them are a definite indicator that this guy is absolutely gonna be an active shooter, or something like that, or be suicidal, because it also includes that also. But it gives you all these indicators that you can look for, and so that you can just be more conscious of it. And then, because psychology can be so complex, we would then refer to a professional for actual evaluation of that individual.
And we've done quite a bit of de-escalation-type training, too, Zach, over the years, and different conflict resolution training, customer service training to deal with difficult customers, and to kind of judge, like I think you said, and assess, you know, is this gonna go to a different level, that maybe we need the police assistance to come? And, you know, I think it's a continual effort that needs to happen more and more, just to keep people on their toes, and unfortunately, it's getting worse and worse instead of better and better, I think, the potential threats. So, it is part of our regular training that we do internal.
And that's the key part there, is including that in part of your de-escalation of training with your staff. And training should be either on an annual or no longer, on an 18-month basis with your staff to deal with issues, and to train staff how to recognize those issues.
Mr. Urban, if, we can have a couple of questions from the other council members. Ms. Davis?
So, this kind of dives into what Mr. Urban was saying, but it's a little different. So as a part of the assessment, I know one of the things I mentioned previously was communicating to staff, so not necessarily, you know, looking at the threat of cyber-type of attacks into our system, but how do we communicate electronically to our staff that there's a threat in the building? And I know I work for, in healthcare, and they're very good at some of that kind of stuff. So I was just curious if that was a part of the assessment and a part of the plan?
Yes, ma'am, it was. Mass notification was included.
Okay.
That's what we refer to as a mass notification, and we specify in the report some actions that you can take that will be actually very low-cost solutions.
Right.
And there are also additional, which you're probably familiar with, third-party applications that can be used to either flash messages on screens-
Networks, yeah.
Yeah. And, or automatically send a text to your cellphone and things like that. And those are all detailed in the report.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
We understand that the presentation tonight is very short and brief, and the consultants are very conscious of making sure that we're not taking it to a level that's- that we're not taking it to a level that's revealing any of our vulnerabilities. But I was going to talk to our city attorney to see if we could go into exec session, maybe to talk about some of this a little more specifically. Most of you might know, though, our charter is pretty limited on what we can go into an executive session for. So I'll talk to Mr. Doll to see if that's something we can bring forward. Because there are, the report is very detailed and there are a lot of recommendations for all of the buildings. And some of them, though, you know, it's going to be difficult for us to move forward without maybe some direction from you guys because some of them, it's really about a balance of providing open customer service, but also protecting employees, our customers, you guys, and anybody that's in our buildings. And the risks are heavier today. And it's one of the things I lose sleep over occasionally is what happens if something happens. And that's something I'll never be able to forget as being an administrator for this organization. I know we can't control all threats and solve all problems, but we need to do the best we can to make sure that our employees, you guys, our customers are safe as possible, but also providing customer service. So there's, you know, as just an example, I don't think this is revealing anything, but an example is, do you put a magnetometer at your entrance to your city hall? And that's very probably contentious and controversial. Is that kind of presence that you want to provide at a city hall that everybody that comes in has to go through a metal detector? Some agencies do it. Go to Denver, they do it. In certain departments, you go to bigger organizations to do it. Obviously, if you're in DC, any building you walk into, you have to go through something basically stripped down. But is that what we want for our community? If not, what's the next best thing that's going to protect people at the, you know, at a reasonable cost? So there's some very difficult decisions to make. You know, I think throwing a metal detector at the front door of security would probably be one of the easiest and quickest things to do. But is that the right thing to do? And it's a very difficult decision.
I think Mr. Matthews had a question.
Yeah, and Mr. Goff is kind of getting to my 10-year flood type of analogy. I mean, to me, the way I'm looking at this, so bear with me, but Level Three is kind of your risk level as far as it's, it might be a juicy target.
Absolutely.
But then, do we do a 10-year flood worth of protection or a 100-year flood? As a, for instance, the chief executive of our nation's got 30 armed guards and 16 cars and an ambulance following him around. Now, our mayor may be a little more expendable. So she only gets, so she only gets the police cadet on a moped. And where do, you know, I'm always looking to try and find where the curves cross as the sweet spot of benefits-to-cost ratio. And that's kind of what I was alluding to with the 10-year flood.
And again, with any security assessment, your staff will have to make the final determination on whether to mitigate the risk or accept the risk for that particular location. Again, we've gone in and done detailed cost analysis on it for you, provided you cost, provided you our expertise as far as what we believe the facility needs to maintain a proper level of security.
Right.
Based on the risk.
With our experience with all these other government entities that we've worked for and seeing things implemented and see how it works. And I worked for the City of Austin for 11 years. And now I'm doing extensive work with the City of Denver. So we have a metararity with all this is when I Parametrics does a risk assessment and we put in there our priorities and things like that, we also try to be realistic, having experienced it in the real world. And so, no, we're not going to say, okay, this whole room needs to be, you're surrounded with bulletproof glass, it's Level Five and this. You can't afford it, it's not necessary, it's excessive. So when we do a design, we basically do it at the most reasonable, I don't want to say the lowest, but the most reasonable countermeasures that are necessary to provide the adequate level of protection.
So that will be part of your recommendations there is where you kind of think the lines, you know?
It is, and in a couple of them, we give you a couple of solutions to, we understand some of the solutions are very expensive and we give you some alternatives as well.
But none of them are excessive as far as, just as the example as I just gave you, we're not going to go pie in this guy and think you all need Secret Service protection and things like that. It's, that's, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Pond.
I just want to reiterate, getting a conversation with the city attorney and really getting to that. Obviously, we can't talk about, we just can't talk about it, right? I mean, this is, all of what you're asking makes total sense and we can't talk about it until we see the list. And you can't really, it's not prudent to show the list. This is proprietary or strategic information, that's what it is. And so however, whatever the interpretation is, I hope that it allows us to go into session and talk about it in order to budget for it appropriately without giving away our strategic or proprietary, you know, necessity essentially and our need to protect that information. So I hope we can do that and obviously it'll come down to an interpretation. And hopefully, if we have to discuss it again even here before we can resolve that, we should. It's important to be able to get to a place where we can talk about it and budget for it.
And to put, maybe to put the perspectives, the costs in perspective a little bit, the recommendations they came up with, I think it was about 800,000 items that they've identified and obviously not in one year. And doesn't mean we have to do all of them either, their recommendations, but the list that they came up with comes up to about 800,000 based on their estimates, something that we could phase in over numerous years. We did, just so you, I'm sure you've all read your budget books already, front cover to back, right?
Oh, excellent.
We did throw a placeholder in for the 2018 budget of 150,000 in the CIP budget to start some security enhancements. We didn't identify, we haven't identified which ones yet based on their priorities, but we do have some money to start looking at it. You know, another kind of big issue, I don't know, a big issue, but part of the discussion I think that we need to have too is, you know, how much, and this goes back to Larry's point, I think, how much money do you put into a building like this that's 40, 50 years old? And, you know, I think if we had a newer, more modern building, I think security enhancements would be a lot easier, maybe cheaper. You know, is the City of Wheat Ridge ever going to get a new municipal building at some point in the next five, 10, 15, 20 years? If so, that, I think that's part of the discussion too. Is, you know, does it make sense to look at that and have a more secure, modern building than putting millions of dollars into this one? That it may not be as effective.
So a new building is in the budget as well?
Oh, yeah, that's in the budget too. Yeah, it's not.
It sounds like we're going to pursue this. I don't know that we need to, but there are some general recommendations, including creating, assigning a city security director. So I think we do need some sort of a direction here as, do we want to?
We're not looking for any consensus tonight. We're just, just a report out. I'm going to see if, again, we can bring this back to an exec session so we can talk in more detail. And we'll figure out how to discuss it during the budget process in open meeting on what recommendations that we're going to make. Joyce has something, looks like.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank I Parametrics and Julie Brison. You all know Julie, our Recreation and Facilities Manager. But they worked very hard on the report and just did a great job. And the only other, of course, our police department's always there to support us as well. There are a lot of recommendations in the report that don't have any cost associated with them. So we're going to be taking a look at those. And some of them are just day-to-day operational things that we can implement. So we appreciate those as well.
Yeah, that's a good point. We keep it open. One, just as an example, is security badges. You know, we put this process in place many years ago and they recommended that you shouldn't wear them below your waist. So I should put it up here, and all of you too, if you're in the building. So I mean, that's just an example of a simple recommendation of things that don't cost any money. Because we do have a lot of people coming and going into the building. It's like, you should, employees are trained. If you don't see a badge, it's like you should ask that person, can I help you? And if, so that's a small recommendation. Sorry, Tim.
Please, Mr. Fitzgerald.
I want to support George's recommendation. I look forward to having an executive session to talk about this because I think there's a lot to talk about that we don't want to talk about right now. So I thank everybody for their report. And I don't know what happens at the Rec Center, but we here have all experienced some finger-pointing and contentious meetings. But it's never gone beyond finger-pointing. I mean, let's hope it never does. But I'd rather just talk about this in executive session.
Sounds like that's, if that works, if that's doable, it sounds like that's the direction we're going to go. Thank you, Steve and Ken. Very interesting report, as well as Julie and Joyce. I think we can move on to item four. Thank you. Yeah, can I go ahead? Okay, counsel, we have a very nice proposal we get to look at tonight. Mr. Art?
Thank you very much, Members of the Council, Mayor. We're here before you tonight to talk about a project that the Urban Renewal Authority has been contemplating for a few months now. It's the development of a new retail building and some light industrial maker space at the corner of 44th Avenue and Jellison Street. Currently, right at the hard corner right now is an empty lot. And just to the east of that is a Swiss Flower Gift Cottage. I get that wrong every time, don't I? Swiss Flower, I'm just going to say, is high. And with us tonight is Heidi Sherrod and her husband Russ, who are the owners of the Swiss Flower Gift Shop, and also Tim Morzell from Economic Planning Systems with us tonight that is going to talk about the project. The Urban Renewal Authority has been contemplating doing a TIP agreement, a tax increment finance agreement for this project. When Urban Renewal Authorities were first set up, this is the type of project that we really look at. It's really taking a locally grown business that started in 1969 by Heidi's parents in the same building and has been in existence in Wheat Ridge since that time. Heidi has a marvelous business there. If you've never been in the Swiss Flower, you're certainly missing a great opportunity to shop for everything from beads and gifts and flowers and ornaments. Amazing shop to go into. They would like to expand their operations in Wheat Ridge. And they have begun that by purchasing a lot to the west of their existing site. There was an old site for an old house, which they have demolished the site. And they've actually began clearing the site and have poured a foundation for their new building. I won't go through the specifics of all their buildings because Tim will go through that along with the finances. But again, this is the type of project that Urban Renewal Authorities really were set up to do. It's taking, as I said, an existing family business and expanding it in the city. Within our documents that we gave you here tonight, we will be coming forward to you at your next council meeting with a redevelopment agreement that needs to be ratified by the city council after the passage of ballot question 300. It says that all TIP agreements, no matter what size, what increment they are, need to come to the city council for ratification. Part of the TIP that we will be using, we'll be using the property tax that flows directly to the Urban Renewal Authority. Part of what's allowed in our Urban Renewal Plan is the usage of sales tax. We will ask for one and a half cent of the three-cent local sales tax to be dedicated to this project. And that requires that we have a cooperation agreement between the Urban Renewal Authority and the city council. You've done this on past projects. You did this with the Kipling Ridge Center, the Wheat Ridge Corner Center, and the West End 38 Center. So that agreement will come forward with you that same night. And that would really be the largest participation of the city council along with ratifying that. I'd like to introduce to you Tim Morzell with Economic Planning System, who was hired by the Sherds to do a financial performer for the project. And then he was also contracted by the Urban Renewal Authority in the city to do an evaluation of those numbers to assure that they met our needs, the if-not-for proposition was met. Kristi Davis is our vice chair of our Urban Renewal Authority. So she's been present for all these presentations and our passage of the redevelopment agreement and the cooperation agreement. Unless there are any other questions, I'd like to turn this over to Tim Morzell, who will talk about the financial impacts of that and the request. And then Russ and Heidi are here and they can answer any questions you may have this evening.
Thank you, Steve. As Steve mentioned, my firm, Economic and Planning Systems, was hired to help evaluate the pro forma that the Sherds developed for the Swiss Flower Shop and then to also help review their request for tax increment financing and a public subsidy from the Urban Renewal Authority and the city. So we put together a brief presentation that kind of summarizes the analysis we completed. Just a little bit of an overview in terms of the presentation, I wanted to provide you guys with a little bit of background on Economic and Planning Systems, an overview of the project and the Urban Renewal Plan area. And then also kind of a summary of how we approach these types of projects and how we determine what kind of a fair or a necessary amount of public subsidy is. And then also a summary of what the project would potentially receive and what the city and URA would receive over the remaining TIP period. So Economic and Planning Systems were based out of Denver. We also have offices in California. We're made up of about 50 employees. We work in all sorts of types of projects related to economic and real estate. Those range from fiscal and economic impact analysis to public financing, real estate market analysis and feasibility analysis, as well as public-private partnerships similar to what this would be. We, our office, the Denver office specifically focuses in the Western United States, really ranging from Montana all the way down to Texas and have also done quite a bit of work in the Denver metro area and specifically with the City of Wheat Ridge and the Urban Renewal Authority. Just to give you a little bit of background on the project, so it's a Swiss Flower Shop, as Steve mentioned. It's located on the southeast corner of 44th Avenue and Jellison Street. The proposed project includes 19,800 square feet of retail and kind of industrial maker space. And it's anticipated to be built in three separate phases between 2018 and 2024. The first phase is really the only kind of anticipated retail component at this point. And that's estimated to have approximately $200 per square foot in annual sales, or about $1.32 million per year in annual sales. And so I just wanted to provide a quick summary of each of these phases and kind of the key components of each that really drive our analysis. So Phase One is located directly on the corner of Jellison Street and 44th Avenue. It includes 6,600 square feet of retail space and would be pretty similar to their existing business. I think it would have a lot of similar products sold on it and would kind of be an extension of what they're currently doing. As I mentioned, that would potentially, hopefully, complete construction by 2019 and would have annual sales of $1.32 million with an estimated market value of $1.6 million for the building and the land, which would essentially drive the potential property tax off of that component of the project. Phase Two is located on Jellison Street to the south of... Phase Two is located on Jellison Street to the south of Phase One. That's anticipated to include six thousand square feet of maker space or kind of sort of light industrial, more open, open space. I think the biggest difference is that it really wouldn't generate sales tax at this point, and it would just have a property tax component. That's assumed to be completed by twenty twenty-two, with an estimated market value of eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, which is a bit lower than the first phase, just due to slightly different use. And Phase Three, similar to Phase Two in terms of the makeup of what's being included in that, with an estimated completion date of twenty twenty-five and about seventy-two hundred square feet of maker space, valued at one point one million dollars for that component of the project. So just a quick summary of the I-70 and Kipling Urban Renewal Area. The general purpose, as is stated in the plan documents, are just to reduce, eliminate, and prevent the spread of blight within the area and to stimulate growth and investment within the area boundaries. And so to do that, the authority and the city are authorized to approve the utilization of tax increment financing, which would essentially take any increment, any sales and property tax increment, and allow that to be reinvested in the project for the purpose of furthering the Urban Renewal Authority's general goals. That plan was approved December twenty fifteen, and based on a twenty-five-year TIF clock, will expire in twenty forty. And then just to give you a little bit of context in terms of where the project sits, right at Forty-Fourth and Jellison, along that corridor there, along the I-70, or sorry, Kipling corridor. So when looking at these types of projects, we really come at it from three separate criteria in order to determine, you know, what an appropriate amount of TIF or public subsidy would be for this type of project. The first is eligible costs, and that's really just identifying any costs that provide some kind of public benefit and help kind of catalyze potentially additional development in the area. The second is looking at the developer returns. We refer to that as the but-for analysis. Essentially, how does the project perform but for the investment from the public sector? And the final criteria we use to evaluate a project is just looking at how much sales and property tax are anticipated to be generated over the remaining TIF period, and how much of that could go to the city and URA, and how much of that can be reinvested in the project. So the first criteria, eligible costs, you know, those include land, utility costs, parking, sidewalks, water, sewer, those kinds of things, those kind of more general site type of improvements. Obviously, a lot of those need to be completed earlier on in the project, and so most of those are front-loaded on Phase One, which places a higher burden on Phase One and essentially requires additional subsidy for Phase One to be a feasible component of the project. So based on the eligible costs identified by the Swiss Flower Shop and reviewed by the URA and the city, there are roughly one point two million dollars in eligible costs in Phase One, two hundred and six, two hundred and seven thousand dollars in Phase Two and Three, for a total of one point six two million dollars for the project as a whole. So looking at the second criteria, we use the developer returns. You know, the real goal of this is just to look at the project with and without public investment and determine how it's performing under those two scenarios. And so to do this, we rely on a fairly common metric of return, which is return on cost, and that essentially takes the project's net operating income and divides it by total cost. Generally, developers look for a six to eight percent range for that metric, and that is really dependent on the level of risk associated with a specific project. For something like this, you know, based on the location, based on kind of the unique use, we thought a seven percent return on cost seemed fair, and we kind of use that as our starting point to evaluate the project going forward. So this slide just presents the summary of the project's net operating income with and without public subsidy, and also project costs with and without any public subsidy. So Phase One, taking the anticipated net operating income of the project, which we have assumed, using a fifteen dollar per square foot triple net rate and pretty standard operating costs, and also roughly two point zero four five million dollars in Phase One in costs, results in a four point six percent return on cost. So that's slightly below the seven percent that we're looking for. So in order to get it up to the seven percent, we backed into what that component of the project require. And in order to get that component up to a seven percent, it requires six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in subsidy. Kind of doing that same analysis for Phase Two and Three, but using slightly lower rental rates based on the kind of maker space use, we ended up with a total of seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in public investment that would be necessary for the project as a whole to achieve a seven percent return on cost. And just as a point of reference, rental rates in Wheat Ridge for retail space, new retail space are probably in the high teens, low twenties. So this is a bit below that, but, and I think, you know, that reflects the unique use and the location that we're looking at. And so the final component of the analysis is just looking at how much property tax and sales tax can be generated over various periods of time. For this, we focused on the first ten years of each phase of the project and assumed that the project would receive one hundred percent of the property tax that is generated, that it is generating, and fifty percent of the sales tax over a ten-year period. So over the first ten years, or between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-eight, Phase One is anticipated to generate four hundred and seventy-eight, roughly four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Phase Two is estimated at a hundred and eleven, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, and Phase Three is roughly a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars rounding up, for a total of seven hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in potential revenue that could be generated by the project. And just another minor point here, I think, you know, I think some of the assumptions we use in terms of sales and escalation rates are on the conservative side, just to make sure that we don't come in too far under what reality could be. So, you know, there is upside associated with some of these numbers looking forward. Just a quick summary of those three criteria we used. So eligible costs are at one point six two million, developer returns, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, and project revenue generation potential at seven hundred and fifty-two thousand. So using those three points of data as a reference, we're recommending that the project would receive seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in subsidy and estimate that it would generate that roughly over the first ten years of each phase. But each phase is capped based on the but-for analysis that we completed. And then finally, just a quick summary of what the project would generate for the URA and the city in terms of sales tax and property tax. Between twenty eighteen and twenty forty, which is the period remaining on the TIF in that URA area, the project is anticipated to generate eight hundred, roughly eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in sales tax revenue for the city. And that's assuming fifty percent gets shared with the project over the first ten years of each phase. And the project would also generate seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars in property tax after the first ten years of each phase, for a total of one point six two million dollars that would go to the URA and the city. And the last slide is just kind of a visualization of what that would look like. The navy or the dark blue is the sales tax that would be generated by the project, and the teal is the property tax. So what you're seeing is kind of the ramp up in sales over the first ten years, with the city receiving fifty percent. And then following the first ten years of Phase One, the URA would start to receive property tax, which would ramp up as each phase ends its ten-year period. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions you guys have for me or for Russ and Heidi.
I see Mr. Matthews got his hand up pretty quick there.
Thank you. The, I'm looking at paragraph six point two here, where you get the pledged property tax revenue, and it's one hundred percent. So the URA will collect a hundred percent of their, or whatever, will get one hundred percent of that that goes to the developer until things are paid off. And then, under pledged sales tax, it says the authority shall reimburse fifty percent of the pledged sales tax. So is that the one and a half cents?
Correct. And just to correct your first portion, the property tax would continue to flow for the period, for those twenty-three years left in the Urban Renewal. In two thousand and fifteen, we started that twenty-five-year clock, so there's twenty-three years left. So that property tax would continue to flow till twenty forty, I think you said it was.
Okay, now, my really prime question here is, what's gonna happen to the TIF money if things go very well, which I'm sure they will, and the seven hundred and some thousand dollars, whatever, is paid off in ten years? Are we gonna terminate everything, or is the URA gonna keep collecting TIF money?
The URA will forego their one and a half sales tax to the city. The property tax will continue to flow in. That will allow us to do other activities within the project area. So off the Kipling Ridge project, the excess revenues that are being generated with that, we're paying for a portion of the traffic signal at Xenon at Applewood Center. We're paying for some additional improvements to the Circle K that's coming in. So we're able to use those revenues to help other projects that may not create any tax increment over a period of time, but want to add a new facade, paint their building.
Should we not use that same money if it came directly to the city instead of going through the URA?
That money, you would only receive your mill levy portion, not all those other portions that come to the Urban Renewal Authority. So those taxpayer monies that are paid in property tax are coming directly back to Wheat Ridge to be used directly in Wheat Ridge.
So the fire districts aren't getting their cut? The schools aren't getting their cut?
They're still getting what they're getting today. They're not getting the increment. So they're still getting, they're getting what they get today, and then what they'll get in the future years would be that higher amount.
And they're also backfilled by the state, based on the increased sales tax that she's paying to the state. That money is paid back to those other tax entities, the schools.
Thank you.
Clear? No, I wondered if that, I don't know that he under, that... What Kristi was trying to say is, at this time, the property generates property tax to those entities that you mentioned.
I understand that. It may be generating fifty dollars a year right now, and they get the fifty bucks. And if it's generating two thousand dollars a year, the URA gets the fourteen hundred and fifty bucks for ad nauseam, in my estimation, but I understand the concept.
I just wanna make sure that the people who are listening understand it as well. Kristi, did you wanna add to that?
Yeah, so I have just a couple of questions, and it was also a question that I had at Renewal Wheat Ridge meeting. And so, you know, first of all, I think that, and I was gonna say this in my report, my elected officials' report, but I think that there are things that are, that the Renewal Wheat Ridge is using the monies that, again, are going back to our city. For instance, one of the things that our council asked for was for us to pay the portion of the lights on Thirty-Eighth Avenue that were not being covered by insurance, so we didn't have like a mismatch of lights on Thirty-Eighth Avenue. And so the monies that would be generated from this type of thing, but this time it's Wheat Recyclery monies and some areas in that Urban Renewal Project, is paying for those lights. Another thing that it's doing is also paying for some of the lighting on the trees and stuff that we're creating around the Thirty-Eighth Avenue area, the white lights that are on the deciduous trees, and I'll give more of an update there. And I think there's other opportunities, you know, as we move forward, that it could be things like sidewalks and, you know, things like that, that the money is still going back with the collaboration of our city of what needs to be done. So I guess it's not just like they're, you know, they get it, and it's kind of the mystery of where it goes. So I think that's important to know. I think the other thing is to learn from our neighbors. I think sometimes there's a kind of misleading that we're taking away from some of those taxing districts. When you look at, and Steve, you're gonna have to help me on some of this, but I kinda know. But when you look at the city of Arvada and the windfall they have with that Costco, and that was an urban renewal area, and that actually, even though it took a few more years to get the increment financing and taxes, I think the number that I heard of Arvada is those schools are now getting three hundred times more than what they did. Wasn't that like some crazy number like that, Steve? I can't, it was like three hundred times more than what they were getting had they not done it. So I think you could look very, kind of short-term of, oh, we're taking it away from people. We're taking away, one, we're not taking away what they currently get. So they are still getting the funds, but for the future, we're actually making it even better for some of those taxing districts than if we didn't create that. So I just wanna kind of clarify that, because I think that, you know, that's always kind of a... What people hear is, we're taking away from the schools, and we're taking away from fire departments, and things like that, which in fact, if anything, we're making it better for them in the long run.
Well, and part of the other theory is too, that, you know, I, we understand TIF is very controversial, and it gets looked at annually at the legislature, but, you know, one of the other theories is that it, projects like this also increase the property values around it that are maybe not part of the TIF, and those increases in property values go to those taxing districts also.
Right. And I think another example would be, you know, they do, they serve as catalysts, like the Sprouts, who's serving as catalyst that across the street now, they're putting a larger service station, shopping area, and it's gonna be, you know, this fancy one now. So now, the only still question I have is still the calculation of the increment. I understand that the increment of the sales tax is on that property because currently there's no sales tax being generated. So of course, you're starting from zero, and then whatever's generated. But I guess I still get a little squirmy, because I think as a city, there will be a loss of property tax from the current Swiss Flower Shop property, because some of those sales will move to the new property. So I know you were gonna look into it or kind of find out, but I guess that's the part that still leaves me a little squirmy, because I know it's really the increment from zero to the new one. But then when you look at, you know, the Swiss Flower Shop as it sits today, what that property's gonna generate, that's probably gonna go down a little bit, because a lot of it's gonna go up at the, because it's definitely gonna go up at the new one. So I think that's the only part that is like, hmm.
So all point of sales will be occurring in the new building. So all point of sales, whether it's bought in the new building or the existing building, will all operate through the new building. So all sales tax, that one and a half cent, there's no real increment in that. It's just one and a half cents of the three cent of everything generated through that building will go back to the Urban Renewal Authority.
So I guess that even makes it more complicated, because what you're saying is then the old building will not be generating any sales tax?
Correct. All points of sales will go through the new building.
So...
The cash register is in the new building.
I struggle with that on increment, because we're gonna lose all sales tax on that property and gain, so like the city won't get anything from the Swiss Flower Shop we know today.
You will still get a cent and a half.
And how much larger is the new one?
But you're saying all point of sales is on the new property.
Correct.
So there won't, once the new property's open, there won't be any point of sales on the old property?
It'll be considered one store.
So then how can the increment be zero?
There isn't any increment on sales tax. Sales taxes, the only increment there is is on property tax.
The base, she's asking the base. There's a base of sales tax there today. Did, was there a base calculated for? Did, was there a base calculated for this?
It was zero.
No, we didn't.
There, we're just getting a cent and a half of all the sales tax. There is no base set for property, a, a sales tax, only for property tax.
But the existing store is your sales tax base, and that goes to zero.
There is no, on TIF, there is no ba, basis only set on property tax, not on sales tax.
Okay. So, so...
But you still lose that tax money like Christie is saying.
No.
You, you take, if, if you're generating two, five thousand dollars over here in the existing building, okay, we're getting five thousand dollars of sales tax money. You go over to the new building, that old building now is generating zero. So the full penny and a half comes out of what the city receives. And so before you turn a profit on that, you got to remember that you lost five grand over here.
Well, it depends what the increased sales, I, I don't know.
Right.
Maybe, maybe the, the applicant can speak to what they propose the increased sales are going to be in the new building. If, if it'll make up the, even at one and a half, will it still be generating five thousand or?
That's a goal.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's just good to know.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, and I, I apologize because I didn't realize that we didn't have a base when it came to sales tax. It was just property tax, sorry about that.
So the, the vision for the expansion is that I will be able to expand even more the diversity of what I have. I know several of you have been in store and, and know it's not just a gift and flower shop. My, my hopes is to bring in more larger scale things like furniture, more home accessories. And all of those things will be higher ticket items, art, that kind of stuff. So it, it will be, in a sense, just an expansion, yes, of my shop, but more larger base. So it could happen, that it could be double. That is a good goal.
Yeah, and I'm making a point of this because I want the folks to understand what's, how this all happens and where the money jingles around from. I, I think it'd be extremely unfair of me if I voted against your TIF when it's going on all around you in the city. So that's, don't go home tonight and have nightmares that your district four councillor is going to vote no on this. But I, I think
Yeah.
TIF needs to be addressed on a state macro statewide basis, and then everyone's on an equal playing field.
I'm, I'm going to just make a statement first on where I'm at with it, that I'm, I have a clarification comparison that, that I think helps with the recent discussion, but I, I support this. I do actually, what resonates with me is the opening, that this, in fact, I think our, our use of TIF in this, in, in this case, for our local community and our, and our, and, and the people who have committed their livelihood to it, I think is the best use of it. And so, I'm not saying that we shouldn't, you know, discuss these things and navigate this space. We should, but I think we should come back and, and realize how important it is. I would use as an example, and it was already brought up, that we Recyclerie would be a great example, I think, of a previous, of a previous use. Again, an expansion of a longstanding family-owned business in our community. And it had tax coming in before it was expanded. And we gave an increment back to them and back to the, to the, to the U R A with a long, a long agreement, you know, that, that played out. In a very, very similar case, I don't know if it was a penny and a half, you can elucidate me on that, but the, the point is, it is very similar. And whether we have empty property or vacation of, of, of an existing store, as we realize this big one, it's not any different than we Recyclerie. I want to point that out, this is an expansion of a business, a locally owned business, a family-owned business in our community, using this tool. And yes, we, we are giving up a, a, a percentage and a half, a penny and a half, however you want to look at it. That is what we're giving up, but the math doesn't have to be more complicated than that. You know, we're, we're giving that up through the proceeds of, of the business. And by the way, the reason why we paid off Wheat Recyclerie so, so fast was that penny and a half happened to, to be very good and based on increased sales, based on a beautifully expanded store, which I expect that you guys will have the same, same level of success. And I thank you for being committed to, to this corridor. I think it's a tremendously important urban corridor. We talk about it all the time, we talked about it, I think, at least in one of our preceding categories here, topics tonight, right? About, about improving and investing in this corridor, so I thank you for that. And I would perhaps just like, you know, to make sure that we are using, equating this to some of the things that we've successfully done, like Wheat Recyclerie.
Can I just have one point of clarification?
Yeah, so this was voted on unanimously by Urban Renewal. And I guess my question was not to allude that I didn't support it because I do support it, but I think that it was questions that I wanted just to check in on because I did have them on that night. So, but it was supported a hundred percent unanimously at Urban, at Renewal, too.
Mayor, if I could, before we go on to other questions, too, I, I just want to clarify too, that in the past, the Urban Renewal law is specific to property tax. Sales tax is your domain in how much you want to share. So ju, just to clarify, in case this comes up, we have set a base of sales tax for past projects. You don't have to, but we have. Essentially, if you set a base for the project, that just means that it's going to take longer because the increment's going to be smaller. If you, you know, it, it's, it's really up to city council if you want to. You can contribute from zero to a hundred percent of your sales tax. Urban law does not dictate the sales tax portion of it. So you can set a base and say, we want to keep the base, but then the number's going to have to be recalculated, meaning that it won't, potentially it won't be a ten-year deal, it could be a twenty-year deal. So it just, it depends on when the monies flow and, and don't flow. So I just want to make sure that we're not, they're not proposing not to set the base in sales tax on this project, but we have in the past.
Ms. Hoppe?
Thanks for bringing all the information to us, and I appreciate that you guys are looking at investing this much time and energy into the community and reinvesting in it. And I do absolutely feel like this is the type of project that we should be supporting in our community. I, I prefer to support our home businesses rather than larger corporate corporations. But just to bring up the, in our packet, we have information, a fifty percent sales tax share is not unheard of. We are sharing a fifty percent sales tax share for eight years with Hacienda Colorado. We're sharing one hundred percent with Kipling Ridge. We're sharing thirty-three percent with Corners at Wheat Ridge, and then a fifty percent suggestion with you guys. And so I think it's completely in line, and I look forward to like the Dairy Queen and the Big O tires around you guys and to kind of step it up a little bit too, so, thank you.
I have, Mr. Fitzgerald?
I, I will be supporting this. And I, I prefer not to think of this as a loss of one and a half percent sales tax for a temporary period, but an investment in Forty-Fourth. We have a, a large vacant piece of property right across the street that we'd all like to see developed. And, you know, this is in an urban renewal area, we're trying to renew this area. So to me, this all makes sense, to the extent that it's a catalyst for the rest of Forty-Fourth Avenue. Good. If it can help sell the property across the street, even better.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a specific question related to, what was the reasoning behind choosing to use the same firm that was utilized by Swiss Flower and choosing to contract with that same firm by the city and by the Urban Renewal Authority to do the same calculations?
It was, it was a small enough project that we felt there was no really conflict of interest to do that. EPS has worked for both sides of projects in Wheat Ridge. And we felt contracted with a separate firm would probably be a, a waste of resources. They could do it.
But I guess my, my concern there is, is that if one person is coming up with calculations and then that same firm is checking those numbers, where's the checks and balances and that? Or how do we know that, and, and not to say that those, these numbers don't pencil out as, as described, but how, how do we know that there's good checks and balance here as it relates to this process?
I mean, just so you know, I mean, economic planning systems, we do about sixty percent of our work with public agencies such as the city and the U R A, and about forty percent with private entities. So a lot of our reputation is based on being fair and balanced in terms of how we approach these things and making sure we're representing the interests of the private developer, but also representing the cities and U R As that we work with. And so, and we do have a history of working with the city and the U R A, doing very similar analysis. So we're comfortable working with staff and it's a very iterative process in terms of making sure everybody's on board in terms of the assumptions that we're using. And, you know, there's, in terms of the work we do, we're very transparent in what we should, in what we share with staff and kind of the back and forth and explaining our methodology. And we, you know, when it comes down to it, this really isn't rocket science. So when we come before staff and come before elected officials such as yourselves, we try and be as transparent as possible in terms of explaining the assumptions that we're relying to, relying on, and that drive the analysis that we're presenting.
And I, I can see that in the presentation that you presented, and I appreciate that. And I just, I think as a, as a matter of process and, and understanding that while this project may not be as large as others, it just, it's, it concerns me that we're, that we have sort of the, the same firm running numbers on both sides. And, and that's not a knock on, on the fair and balanced approach you've taken to this. It's just a procedural thing to know that we're, we're getting a good, clear analysis of this. And I guess, as it relates to the question of sales tax base, again, on, on a project of this nature, it, it does seem to be worthwhile to invest in, in, into this particular area. And I, I think that, you know, each project needs to be looked at individually, but if we start looking at basing our, our sales tax at zero, there may be other projects that are much larger that come to us and say, well, you base this project at zero, why don't you base our project at zero? And so it sort of sets up a domino effect that, or precedent that I, I don't want to necessarily set up. So I, I would be very cautious about setting the base at zero because the whole idea of urban renewal is to set a base and work from there. And while the state says this urban renewal is primarily focused on property tax and leaves the sales tax to us, and in previous projects we've had a, a base on sales tax, I think we should stick to some sort of base on sales tax. And I, I would like to see some sort of calculation as to what kind of effect a base on sales tax would have to this project so that we're at least aware of what kind of extension or impact that would have on this because it isn't just about this project, it's about what does this project portend for other projects down the road? So that, that's my concern.
I think that's a completely valid concern. And just so, I mean, there's a lot of complexities associated with this project that have to do with the fact that it's an expanding business and the existing business isn't included in the TIF area. The new TIF project area. And so, when we completed our analysis, we essentially assumed that the existing sales are outside of what we're doing. So from the perspective of the way we ran the numbers, the existing sales aren't included in what we're presenting and what we're summarizing. So if they were, the sales tax estimates that we're showing would be quite a bit higher. And I anticipate that Phase One would pay off or reach that cap sooner than what we're showing. What we're currently showing is just an estimate of the sales associated with the sixty-six hundred square feet associated with the new phase, and doesn't include any sales associated with the existing building.
That's interesting.
So, so if we need to come back and revise the now, you know, our analysis, we can. But right now, the way you're describing it, include, you know, having a base that's outside of the analysis and would continue to go to existing taxi, or locally, the city, that's, that's actually what's reflected in the current numbers. It just would need to be drawn up that way legally, which I think could create difficulties. I, you know, I don't know what goes into that.
Ms. Durin?
Thank you, I just have a comment. I'm really excited about this. This is the kind of investments I'd like to see in our community, and your willingness to be able to take that on because it's huge. But I think that's really going to lift up the area, the neighborhood, and I'm excited. I mean, it even looks better the way it is right now. I think you've cleaned it all up and it's like, God, that looks even better now. So thank you, and I'm excited about this, and I support this, so thank you.
Thank you, Monica. I like the fact that it's retail, do you know how hard it is to get retail? And in our city, it's, it's very nice. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Now you're going to be bringing this to us officially?
The twenty-fifth, next Monday.
Twenty-fifth, right, all right. Thank you very much for your presentation and your time. All right, our last business item is number five, Activate Thirty-Eighth Project. I see Mr. Brink is here.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We have with us here tonight from Local Works, Rachel Holteen and Britta Fisher to talk about their work they've been doing on, on Thirty-Eighth Avenue between Kipling and Youngfield. That stretch of roadway has been on the city's radar screen for quite a while, being that it, it's got some real substantial infrastructure needs, the condition of the road, drainage, lack of sidewalk, good bicycle facilities, all those things. And over the years, it, it's come up quite a few times, Dirt Task Force discussions and so forth. But to really rebuild that whole stretch of road and do it right is a substantial sum of money, and it just hasn't been able to get traction yet. So Local Works, more recently, got a active living grant to look at what could we do, you know, short term, you know, more, you know, immediately, in a smaller scale to help build some momentum and make improvements there. Plant some seeds, if you will, to try and improve things out there. So they did quite a bit of homework out there, engagement with the, with, with the community out there, the residents, getting a good feel for what it's like out there, trying to get around and, and what the needs are. And they're going to talk a little bit about that. And then culminating with a demonstration project they'd like to do first week of October. Is it Saturday the sixth or seventh, if I'm getting my dates right? So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Rachel and Britta and let them describe what they've got going here.
Great, thanks Scott. Activate Thirty-Eighth is the name of the project from Kipling to Youngfield along Thirty-Eighth Avenue and the impacted neighborhoods. And that name was selected by folks around the table from the community that really what they'd like to see is people out on the streets and in the neighborhoods and feeling connected to other parts of the city, not only in a car, but also via their... Is that somebody else's? Via their feet as pedestrians, bicycles, and also wheelchairs, and finally transit use. The reason that Kaiser Permanente put together this active living grant was because when people are active in their transportation uses, they have much better health outcomes. So if you get out of your car to take a walk, if you decide to take the bus to work one day a week, if you take your feet to go down to the grocery store, that all adds up to a much healthier lifestyle and outcomes. So they put out a competitive grant, and we were one of twelve finalists that had site visit. And from there, we showed Kaiser Permanente a, a portion of the, the route there. We dropped them off at Five Fridges Farm and then walked back to the rec center. And by the time we had gotten to Thirty-Eighth and Kipling, they said, this is one of the most uncomfortable pedestrian experiences we've ever had. And they laughed at me, well, okay, they didn't outright laugh, but they kind of rolled their eyes at me when I made them put on safety vests. And then by the end, they were pretty happy for them. So it, it is an area that can be quite uncomfortable to walk and bike and use transit and use a wheelchair, which we see wheelchairs out in the street along that area. And so this grant was an opportunity to galvanize local agencies that have all had an interest in this area, as well as the community. So to ask residents, what's their experience of Thirty-Eighth? What is important to them on this section of Thirty-Eighth? How would they like to be able to connect to parts of their community? And so this first year of the grant ran from basically December of two thousand and seventeen. And so this first year of the grant ran from basically December of 2017, and will end in March of 2018. And it's all about assessment, and then in the two years after that, it will be all about implementation. We have many members who are part of our core team, and Jenny Snell is our Activate Thirty-Eight Coordinator, she is on vacation this week, so unable to join you tonight, but she'll be following up with you on some of the opportunities that we're going to discuss this evening. And then to my right is Rachel Holteen, and she is an active partner on this project as part of her work at Bicycle Colorado, as well as an involved community member. So she wears a couple hats on this, and I wanted to invite her to speak directly about some of the outcomes that we've already seen in our assessment phase, so what have we learned, and share with you some of the compelling data.
Thank you for having us here tonight, this has been a really exciting project to be a part of, and if you're okay with it, I'm actually going to switch over to the podium because a lot of my work is map-based, so I'm going to go ahead and go over there.
Alright, so as Britta mentioned, I have been fortunate enough to be part of the Activate Thirty-Eight Grant Coalition, and I get to do this professionally through my work with Bicycle Colorado, I'm the Active Transportation Manager, and through that position, I actually work with communities across the state to increase opportunities for people to safely walk and ride a bike in their own communities. So through that, I've got some expertise, and as many of you know, I'm also part of the leadership for our local bicycle and pedestrian advocacy organization, and I'm also a mom who's really concerned about safety for kids who want to and need to walk and ride their bike to school and to parks. So I'm going to show you this map here, and it does a good job of telling, demonstrating the kind of data that we've been collecting. The first phase of this grant, it's a, it's a two-phased grant, and the first phase that we're in, we've broken into a couple of sub-phases. So as Britta mentioned, we've been doing a lot of different data point collection, we've been doing passive data, the, the city staff, who is part of our core team, has been incredible partners, Public Works has been out there numerous times measuring traffic counts and average speeds, the rec center has been doing both intercept surveys as well as doing bike counts at the rack in front of the rec center. We did safe routes to school surveys at both Clear Strand and Prospect Valley to assess how active are the families in terms of walking and riding bikes to school. And then we've done several very engaged community events, so there's a lot of information in here, and I'm going to narrow in on it a little bit. One of the first things we did, let me just get rid of some of this stuff, one of the first things we did was work with students at both Clear Strand and Prospect Valley doing something called a youth walking lab, and we took five kids from each school along with parent guardians, and we did a walk audit of the built environment with the kids, and the kids were given green and red frames, it's a little bit hard to see here, or it was a frame, it was green on one side, red on the other, and we asked the kids to point out what felt safe and what felt scary to them. So in their own words, we actually mapped the route from Thirty-Eighth Avenue to Prospect Valley, and then also did the, the route along Thirty-Eighth in front of Clear Strand, and the red Xs is what feels scary, and the green is what feels safe, but this is literally in their own words, they would say things like, without a sidewalk, people might walk in the street, and wheelchairs have to use the street, this is from kids. So we have really rich data from kids themselves in terms of what encourages them to feel safe walking and, and riding a bike. We also did, these black icons here is police data in terms of accidents that involved bikes and pedestrians, we're still trying to get the last 12 months on that, but it's incredibly helpful for us to track some of the data. This right here was a pedestrian fatality that happened at Thirty-Eighth and Tabor a couple of years ago, it was in one week in Wheat Ridge in which there were three accidents in one week involving pedestrians and bicycles, two of them fatal. The other thing we're collecting that I think is the most powerful data of all, is we are doing first-person interviews, let me just clean this up, so we have on numerous occasions gone out and talked to people who live and travel along the corridor, and the first day we did this, we interviewed four people, all living, we caught them all kind of between here and here, and two out of four of the people that we interviewed knew somebody who'd been hit by a car. One of them, her sister had just been hit the week before, right here. So we're getting these really powerful stories, and it's a good reminder that there's a lot of people who live on that corridor that are really dependent on the corridor, there are no alternatives to travel through there, so people really don't have a choice, but we, I do have to show our very first interview, if you guys don't mind, I'd like to play this video, this was our first interview, and it was this kid named Jason, and actually his brother, who you'll see in a second, kind of popped out and started talking to us, and as we watched this, I'm just going to invite you to pay attention to a couple of things, the kids are in a parking lot, and the parking lot is where they have to play, and you can hear the traffic of Thirty-Eighth behind them. This is where we interviewed them, and Louise Turner Park is right here, and they're not allowed to go to the park. They finally got old enough that their dad sends them kind of back and around, but it's really hard for them to get to the park, and they're literally a quarter of a mile from it. And then watch the older kid, he has clear signs of ADHD, just can't stop moving his hands, and those are the kids that really need to get out and be active and moving for their emotional, mental health, so we're going to watch Jason and Aaron, and this guy's like a built environment specialist, he's awesome.
Jason.
Jason.
Jason, how old are you?
Uh, seven.
Seven, and how safe do you feel when you walk or ride your bike here?
I don't feel that safe because when I was riding my bike with my stepmother, Erin, right here, uh, he was, uh, I was right behind him, he didn't see me, and I looked right behind me, and, uh, I saw a little car very, very close to me, and then I just turned to the other side so I don't get very hit.
Oh, good, good, so it ended okay, but how did it make you feel?
It made, made me think, it made me think of my grandma.
Yeah, why did it make you think of your grandma?
She got hit, she got hit by a truck.
Oh.
And it, it was a very accident, a very accident.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
The guy was very scared.
Yeah, well, what would make you feel safer, riding your bike or walking around here?
To make a sidewalk?
What'd you say?
To make a sidewalk?
A sidewalk?
Like, take out half of this, like, continue the sidewalk all the way down.
Yeah, nice.
And especially with the park over there, I'm like, just like, usually we go down to the park, ride our bikes down to the park, and we just play at the park, I mean, like, up there, up there it even narrows, it narrows, and it's like a little path, it's, it's scary, it's scary.
Yeah.
That's why we have to go around the block and go down this way, just get down to the other part of the road.
Well, you guys go all the way around.
Yeah, we have to, because my dad couldn't feel safe going this way.
Yep. Well, awesome.
Anyway, there's several interviews like that, we've talked to a woman who's wheelchair-bound, we interviewed some folks at Morningstar, and heard that the seniors, if it was safer for walking, they'd be out walking more, they have a lot of dogs that live at that. Anyway, so I encourage you guys to take a look at, at the map, we can send you the link. So, so having done several months of first-person interviews and excessive surveying, the community's identified four key concerns. Of course, everyone says we want sidewalks, and most people sitting at the table know that sidewalks are an incredibly expensive proposition, so part of the grant is to identify what are some short and medium-term options that would address some of their concerns that the city can invest in now while working on the longer-term vision and funding options for a corridor that's inclusive of sidewalks. So the four things that have been identified include improved safety for crossings, calm the traffic, so they want cars to slow down, they would like to have more separation if they're walking and biking, have separation from the cars, and then the fourth issue that they've identified is they want it to feel more like a place for people. So based on that feedback, we've been working with the coalition and with the city to design a demonstration project that, as Scott mentioned, we're going to be setting it up on October first, and it will run the first week of October, and it will accumulate with an event in Louise Turner Park on the seventh from one, one to three. So what, what we did is, we took a look at the park and access to the park, and these corridors here represent safe alternative routes that you can get to the park without traveling on Thirty-Eighth Avenue. Here, I'm just going to shut off the rest of this data here, we don't need to look at everything. So, so we started by identifying this stretch of road as, we'd like to do everything we can to ensure that the cars are traveling the speed limit while they're in this area. So we're working with Scott and his team, they're bringing forward some proposals in terms of how we can do a speed awareness zone there, and then honing in closer to the park itself, we're really focusing on the intersection of Thirty-Eighth and Parfit, or Parfait, depending on your regional dialect. We are doing a couple of things there, one is, at the, at the intersections, there are crosswalks, and so we're going to be introducing pedestrian crossing flags, and those will be at the marked, at the marked crosswalks in that intersection, as well as the one at the bus stop that's further east, and those really help raise visibility for pedestrians in the crosswalk, and cars are more likely to slow down. We're also, this is my personal favorite, Denver recently adopted something called Creative Crosswalks Program, and so Public Works has been great working with us on the first ever, hopefully, creative crosswalk in Wheat Ridge. The community coalition has identified the chicken as our icon, because we're doing a lot around why the chicken crossed the road, and it's also an agriculturally rich heritage location, so in our crosswalk, we're going to have two chickens, we've got mountains, and we have broncos colors, so those were selected by our coalition, so those will be painted in the crosswalk connecting the park, as well as over on this side. We couldn't do it across Thirty-Eighth because it would have required closing Thirty-Eighth, and that just wasn't feasible. What those crosswalks do is they raise attention that it's a people place, and it really raises community pride. For the event itself, we're going to have a Siquehla Via, so if we're successful in getting the permit to close this whole area at the event itself, kids will be able to ride their bikes and scooter and really enjoy the street as a place that they feel safe and comfortable in. We're also creating something we're calling the People Lane, there's this weird sort of non-designated space shoulder along the west side of the park here, so we're going to be putting up vertical separation so that people can safely walk or ride their bikes from, there's an entry point to the park here, and another one back here. So those are the things that we're going to be doing, all of them, we're working with Public Works, they're all following national safe practices and best practices, and all of these things are things we're going to be taking a lot of data and metrics, including extensive community feedback, both before, during, and after the demonstration. And Britta, did I forget anything on that?
Just want to reiterate, the invitation is for Saturday, October 7th, 1 to 3 P. M., and I'll be there at Turner Park.
And we're calling it Roll, Stroll, and Strut in the Park, and it's going to be fun, and there's going to be chickens, just saying.
I also wanted to point out Jenny Snell will be following up with you, to send you an email reminder, and also, if any of you can't come that day, the seventh, there'll be a chance for a follow-up walk the week after.
I have to admit, the Creative Crosswalk Project really sounds great, you know, I, what I'm hearing is that the grant has enabled some really thinking and processing, and our city seems to be ripe for so many wonderful communication projects, I'm glad that we're getting enough retail, we're adding to our retail so that we, we have some tax base to work with, because I hear our community is really wanting these things for, for, for the city. Mr. Pond.
Thank you, I, I want to say two, two things, first of all, thank you, quite a bit of effort into pulling all this together, the metrics and, and the event, so thank you, and I want to actually reference the fact that, you know, Tim and I, for a long time now, have had coffee with council in District Three, and I will tell you that this is one of the, this stretch of road is one of the things that we have talked about all, all the time, and it, it, I think is one of, one of, one of the places in District Three where people really, really have, have a concern and want to see some change, and we've struggled with the price tag, although it's been identified multiple times, this is a great creative way to bring, to, you know, to leverage some outside money and some good ideas and some solutions that we can fit in to our budget before we try to, try to do some of the bigger solutions, and I just, I, I, I think, I, I hope I'm speaking for our constituents in District Three, Tim and I, in saying thank you, because I know that they care about this very much.
Council, comments or questions? Ms. Davis?
I just want to say thank you for the work, and I like that little chicken thing, too. The other place would be good for that chicken thing is Thirty-Eighth, the other side of Thirty-Eighth, by that King Supers, where that flashing thing is.
Right.
It's scary over there. But anyways, so thank you for that work, and I think the other thing is, is it's nice that we're getting some grant money to do some of the work, and again, kind of going back to our story that we were saying before this, you know, it could be an opportunity, again, for some urban renewal funds that could, you know, also help this project out along the way, which, you know, this would be funds that the city would not otherwise have, so especially with the Sprouts Project and some work going on over in Applewood, so in the Applewood Shopping Center, so again, hopefully more opportunity there.
Ms. Fisher?
Fine, I just wanted to let you know, Kristy, you'd appreciate this, I know Steve's already left, but Renewal Wheat Ridge actually got Hooton and Hollerin at the coalition meeting because we mentioned that Renewal Wheat Ridge funds were going to be used from Kipling over to the dental office to create one point of access that lines up with the development across the way and would include sidewalks, and that got a lot of excitement from the people at the table, so thank you.
Great, sure, certainly.
So I was fortunate enough to present the project at the last District Three meeting, and it was really well-received by, I think, everyone in the room, and I think what, what really felt different is that we're taking an incremental approach, and we very thoughtfully at the table talked about a lot of different ways that you can solve this in small pieces, and like, out of nowhere, this guy's like, well, I, what about asking people to donate their right of way so that we can get sidewalks? And I don't think that guy would have thought of that if we hadn't been talking about this, and it needs to be a partnership, and so that's why I'm excited about the project, is it's really asking our citizens to rethink how they see these things coming together and recognizing it takes time, and there's little things that can be done along the way, and it's, it's a partnership, so that was kind of a fun moment. So we said yes and took his address, so, no.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, we'll probably get to see some of you in October, what was the date again?
Seventh.
October 7th.
One to three.
One to three.
The setup painting is on Sunday, October 1st, from 1 to 4, so some of our coalition partners will be there, so if you can't make it on the 7th and you want to stop by on the 1st, we'd bring your painting close, and then on the 7th, it's from 1 to 3, which is a Saturday. Yep, we're going to follow up with you.
Okay, that really concludes the, the business portion. Time for elected officials' reports, Mr. Pond, do you have anything for us? Ms. Davis, have you blown your wad down there?
It's like, are you done? No, I'm not done, haha, so just some updates for Renewal Wheat Ridge, because I think we are doing a lot of moving and shaking, so just a couple of updates, I'm going to kind of reiterate what was said earlier.
Thank you.
But we do have a meeting tomorrow at 6:00, and people are welcome to come, and the other- And, um, the other thing, just some updates. So, uh, Renewal Wheat Ridge did approve the streetlights, so we are sharing, or we are actually not sharing, we are taking that expense on, um, and the insurance is paying for the other. So, so that's good news. Um, the other thing that came to Renewal Wheat Ridge was, um, the, some of the lighting situation. So, um, as you guys might know, you do know, um, the deciduous trees that are kind of along, like, um, Posey Girl and, uh, you know, Right Coast Pizza. Yeah, up, um, so that area there already has some, um, lights on there, but at the time, um, the lights that were put on there might not necessarily have been like long-term, heavy-duty, um, lights.
Yeah, they were, they were just put up for, for the holiday season.
Yeah.
Then I authorized and, and asked staff, "Let's leave them up year-round," and, and unfortunately, they were just one or two-year life-span lights. Plus, Hale took out most of them.
Yeah. So, um, so that request was made, um, that Renewal Wheat Ridge would pay for the removal of the current lights and the hanging and, um, and process of putting on the new lights, um, for those nine deciduous trees in that area. Uh, we did approve that. Um, the other thing that was asked of us was the lighting of the, what we always know as the Christmas tree or holiday tree. Um, we did not take that on because we felt it was an item that was always previously budgeted, and it was not something from a Renewal Wheat Ridge, uh, process that we really wanted to possibly have it accidentally taken out of the city budget because they didn't pay for it this year and kind of assumed that it would be a Renewal Wheat Ridge thing every year. So that was one thing that we said, "It's already in the Parks and Rec budget, keep it there." And the other thing that we, we also, um, just keeping in mind, our goal and our focus is, um, there was also a contract for kind of upkeep of the lights, and we felt that as Renewal Wheat Ridge, that really our goal is not the maintenance of some of these projects that we do, but it's to have the projects done to support the city and our community, but then have the city possibly do the maintenance of it. So it was a great discussion, it was a fair discussion, um, and so that was the outcome of that. Uh, just a little update, so the Hacienda Colorado, uh, property, although it kind of, it had the numbers on here, those, those are numbers, it's, it's a project that's not yet, um, completed. I guess they're working on some property or something downtown. So there's a little bit of delay on that one, but, um, there's still a thumbs up on that. Um, again, big discussion around, um, some of the, some of that project scope and where the undergrounding of the lights go and how far it should go. You know, does it go to 38th? Does it go around the corner of 38th? And those types of things. Uh, so there was some good discussion around that. And I think in a nutshell, that's it. But there was a, a good meeting, a lot of good discussion, a lot of thoughtful, um, discussion around, um, how those dollars are used to benefit our community.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Surprisingly, I don't really have much to say. Uh, some of the folks on the Housing Authority and I took a tour of, uh, a building that Lakewood had done, and, uh, I was very, very impressed. So, uh, Housing Authority is still wrestling with the issues involving budget, um, and a definition of our mission, because our, our old mission statement is no longer operative because there are no more, uh, foreclosures to buy and rehab. So, uh, we are still struggling to, uh, define ourselves, redefine ourselves, and find a way forward.
I'd just like to add that I would vote to update your moped ex, um, escort to an American-made Harley.
Oh, so now I'm not quite as mad at you, right? The Harley sounds pretty good. I, I might forgive you now. Sidecar, I want to drive it. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to, uh, in case anybody wasn't aware, but that the, uh, Governor Hookland issued an executive order calling, uh, the General Assembly into a special session on October 2nd to take legislative action to codify that retail marijuana sales are subject to sales tax levied by certain special districts and other limited purposes for, uh, limited purpose government entities such as RTD. Uh, the special session usually lasts three to four days, but the Commonwealth Municipal League staff believes that this, uh, particular session might be over in one, or, in over in two to three days without any, uh, legislation being adopted.
Oh, I got it. Okay, thank you. Ms. Hoppy?
Yep. Uh, the Wheat Ridge Business District had an open house at IPI, um, the first Thursday of this month, and it was a successful one. We had, um, our board members were there to meet some business, uh, owners and property owners in Wheat Ridge, and, um, talked about our new Facade Plus program. And, um, I just wanted to remind people, if you know anyone who would like to, um, do some major investing in the exterior of their building, right now would be a really great time. And, um, we are not asking for, uh, specific architectural details right now. We're asking for your plan, for your vision, and, um, explain to us why your vision would be the best vision, and then, um, we'll be picking some of those projects to be able to spend those monies on. Um, and then thanks Renewal Wheat Ridge for not, uh, for really doing some good consideration with what you guys, I agree with all the stuff that you said that you guys worked on. So thanks on that.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Ms. Clark?
Nothing.
I haven't forgot you tonight. That's good, because you're sitting right there. Um, you know, I forgot to mention it, but on Labor Day, on Labor Day, on that Monday, I went to, it's called, I'm going to mispronounce it, R.I.S.E.S., R.I.S.E.S., they do dental care right at 38th and Wattsworth or just north of it. They have, that morning, it's, they have free dental care, and it's unbelievable. Uh, they had the, it's from noon or 9:00 to noon, and they had people in line at 7:00 in the morning. They served maybe 150 people that day to do, um, extractions, which is the most popular thing that have done. I think it's tremendous that we have somebody in our, in our city that, that does that, examinations. And if you're in line by, I think it was 9:00 AM or something like that, and they couldn't get to you by noon, they will take an appointment and bring you in free for, for all those people that don't have dental insurance. R.I.S.E.S., is it R.I.S.E.S.?
Hmm.
Yep.
Sure.
I just wanted to mention the, uh,
I did, too.
If people drive by IPI and they look at the new awning out there and the new patio, it is very classy. It's really good.
Really?
That was a, uh, that, that was partially paid for by grants from the Wheat Ridge Business District, and, uh,
That's nice.
Yeah, it's really great. Other, other businesses, including restaurants and lounges, should probably consider looking at that, uh, because it's just gorgeous. It's a real asset to our city.
Good, I'm glad you said that. And this past weekend, Lutheran Hospital did a women's wellness free clinic, four hours on, in, on the morning, Saturday morning, and they had 300 women come in for advice, information, they had doctors, presentations, et cetera, et cetera. I was one of the presenters. I wasn't a presenter, I was introducing presenters. I think it's tremendous that we have, um, companies, or, of course, Lutheran's a nonprofit, but that we have a hospital of that magnitude in our city, and, you know, they go beyond, "If you're sick, come in," or, you know, "You're hurt," or whatever, that they reach out to the community. So I'm very proud of Lutheran. That's it tonight.